If you would, please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for today. We thank you, Lord, for this meeting here, Lord. We thank you for this town of Vero and the many blessings that we see here in this town. Heavenly Father, we ask this morning that you give wisdom, that you give understanding, that you give direction and purpose. Father, that you give protection and that you give good decisions and good ideas, Lord, that can go forth, that could help this community grow and be the community that you needed to be. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless these men and women up here as they make decisions, that they stand with their convictions and be true to who they are and be the person that you would have them be. And, Lord, we give you praise for all that you do for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. And amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With that, we open the June 2 regular city council meeting in Vero Beach, Florida. Mrs. Vock, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Roll?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mayor Winger?
Here.
All right, preliminary matters. Any agenda additions, deletions, or...
Move for approval as submitted.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Passes four, nothing. Proclamations?
Proclamations. City of Vero Beach to recognize the Republican Women of Indian River County. Would you all like to come up and stand behind the podium while I read this? This is really a great certificate of appreciation for putting the flags across the bridge. We greatly appreciate the Republican Women doing this year after year, and we thank you for that. The certificate says that the City of Vero Beach would like to thank the Republican Women of Indian River for their service to the community by sponsoring the flags that fly proudly on the Merrill Barber Bridge and the Alma Lee Loy Bridge on special holidays for the past six years. Their contribution has saved the taxpayers over $2,500, and the City of Vero Beach commends you for your help in making Vero Beach such a wonderful community.
Do you want to hit the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you. The Republican Women of Indian River County are just really, really pleased to be able to help our community in this way. The Republican Women definitely believe that when community steps up to do things and not ask the taxpayer to do it, when we do so voluntarily, it's helpful for everybody. And we give to the community in many ways, not just straight up to the city, but we also give scholarships to local students and things of that nature. And it's because we feel community is so incredibly important. And so we hope to continue to be very active members of the community and help out in any way that we can in the future. And we really appreciate the recognition for this. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Can you give this to them later after we assign it?
Bob is recovering from her vacation yesterday, and I haven't recovered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, here, hold on. One more. Hold it here.
That's great. A little closer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Keep our patriotism alive.
Yes.
It warms our hearts.
All right, with that, we'll move to public comments. Mrs. Anna Brady, would you come forward, please?
And I'll need the overhead, if that's possible. Does it warm, does it need to warm up? I got it. Never mind. Anna Brady, 1735 20th Court, Vero Beach. Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is a follow-up. I do need our, will it eventually warm up? Okay. So this is a follow-up to the May 5 meeting when Debra Atwell brought you the design of the historic marker that we're proposing for city landmarks going forward. And I'm just following up and bringing you the figures you should have in your packet for the initial setup of the marker and also the fabrication. That total is for the fabrication of one marker. And the cost, you know, the total cost would be $1,708. Obviously, a lot of that is the setup fee. And then going forward, the fabricator is Erie Landmark Company, which is very well-known, but would be, would cost $179. So the Historic Preservation Board is coming back to you with those figures for that marker and obviously asking for approval for that, to progress, to move forward with that money in the fabrication of the marker.
Just as a question, I mean, the, I'm looking at the 1458. I mean, that is, that is one time so that they just set up the mold?
Yes.
And then after that, the individual homeowners will be paying for the plaques?
Yes, and that's how it's done in other communities.
Okay.
And the price that I've seen, at least when I worked at the City of Fort Pierce, was around a little over $200. Probably would add a little because of the shipping costs, so.
Yeah, we had...
Because they are heavy. They're heavy bronze markers.
We had these in Richmond. Is, if there's no objection, is that good enough, or do we have to vote on this? Is consensus good enough?
I'll make a motion to approve.
No, you take action by vote.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
I have a question, please.
Go ahead.
Exactly how much? We just need to put that in the motion as well.
As well, and yeah, if we have any funds available for this, where would it be coming out of the budget?
We would be taking it from a line item, and I'm not really sure, special services or something like that.
Or miscellaneous or some...
Miscellaneous.
Well, is this something that we could take out of our budget? I mean, we don't, I know a lot of times the city council's got a lot of allocated funds and, you know, we just quit going to a lot of the functions.
You don't have the money in your travel expenses, but you do have some in the miscellaneous, if you want to take it out of there.
Take it out of there.
Thank you.
And I just want to mention, too, that because that cost is for one marker, that would be allocated to the Heritage Center building, which is a city-owned building. We also have the diesel plant, which obviously we know is tied up, but if we did have another marker made, then we could keep that at planning, in the Planning and Zoning Department, so that people could actually come in, homeowners could come in and hold the marker and really see it. So that would be an additional $179.
Mayor, before you take a vote, you should open it to the public comment.
Public comment. Seeing none, do you need to modify your motion?
Probably need to amend it.
I would amend it to at least $2,000 and to cover at least that initial and then an extra mark, the other marker for the diesel.
Okay, I'll second the amendment. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. carries four, nothing. All in favor of the original motion?
As amended.
As amended. There, I knew I missed something. As amended. Aye.
Aye.
Passes four, nothing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your work. Great, great addition for the community.
Thank you.
Mrs. Debra Degg, would you come forward, please?
Thank you for approving that, City Council. Thank you. I'm a little under the weather today, so Ken's helping me a little bit. My name is Debra Degg. I'm at 1846 21st Avenue. Our Osceola Park Neighborhood Plan was adopted over six years ago. Part of the process to implement our neighborhood plan is to incorporate or overlay districts. We've been patiently waiting since our neighborhood plan was adopted to move forward. In the meantime, the neighborhood pursued and achieved recognition on the National Register of Historic Places and has a Florida Historic Heritage Marker. Our forward motion has been impeded, including being told there's been staff cutbacks and no time. And while we're at, put at the end of the line, other redevelopment occurs within our neighborhood. The intent of this request is to follow ideas and policy already available and to fine-tune and address our neighborhood needs and concerns. This request is also intended to save staff time by making available an adaptable, reusable form, the draft neighborhood district overlay provision to other neighborhoods that request such. I am respectfully requesting that the City Council approve time scheduled with the City Manager, the Planning Department, staff in our neighborhood, to draft overlay district ideas pertaining to our adopted neighborhood plan to preserve our neighborhood's historic quality of life and address its unique needs and concerns. Thank you. And that's what I'm here to request, is basically time to move on ideas that have basically been sitting on a shelf.
Just a quick question, and I don't know if you can answer it, or Ken, you can answer it. Could you just define for me the boundaries of the neighborhood, just to kind of get an idea of how large it is?
Actually, I can say that it's 27th Avenue West, Route 60 North, 16th Avenue South, and 20th Avenue East. We have within that, though, different neighborhoods. The Historic District, I believe, is a smaller section. The Historic District is a smaller section, which in and of itself is considered a type of overlay.
And you're wanting to encompass the whole?
Actually, we want to start out with the Historic Section first and then open it up to the other sections as they begin to understand, but we've had, we've been approached with concerns, and each section might have its own unique needs, which is why I put it the way I did.
I have no problem getting with Tim McGarry, and we'll work out a timeframe in which we can address that community. As you know, we are looking for a consultant to come in and help us with our comprehensive plan, only as a per-hour charge. It'd be part of our staff, but we're working, working in that area. That may free up some time that we can address this a little closer.
Great.
Thank you.
I think you have consensus.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
All right, open up to further public comment. In the back row, the gentleman in the blue shirt. Come forward, please.
Good morning, Council. My name is Ron Rosenthal. I reside at 910 Jasmine Lane, and I'd just like to make a few comments on the rezoning application.
Let me just stop you respectfully for a second. How are we going to handle this because it becomes quasi-judicial?
Yes, and actually, I believe it's just first reading?
Yes.
Right, so there will be a future public hearing on those matters, which will be quasi-judicial, and the public on those matters can speak.
Well, I mean, I'd like to hear the com, can we hear the comment this morning or not?
You really shouldn't without, is the applicant here? Okay. You should probably...
Excuse me, I don't have any, I don't have any specific comment about the property. My only concern was that I don't think people were properly notified about when and where they could appear about this. That's the only thing that I wanted to say about it. I don't have any specifics or an opinion whatsoever about what went on, but after talking to some of my neighbors, the people that were, that abut this property were not notified correctly, and all of us kind of took this quasi-judicial statement that says no public opinion is allowed, that we couldn't even appear. And so that's really what I wanted to address, that I felt that, that because we don't know the legal terms and exactly where and when we could appear and what we could say, that most of the neighborhood didn't realize exactly what was going on.
Where did you hear that there could be no comment?
From Planning and Zoning.
Well, here's the planning director. He can explain. Maybe they send the notices out for the public hearing? Is that what you do, Tim?
I'll explain. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Because I was at the Planning and Zoning meeting, but no one was prepared and no one came with me.
Okay, we do notify within 500 feet for the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. All right, and they're told to come to the meeting. Don't get a separate notice for your hearing, because we haven't even set up the hearing for that. So that's fully, now, this is about no opinion. It's most likely I talked to one of the neighbors. I said that typically at a first reading for quasi-judicial, we don't have any public comment because of the nature of it. So that's where that may come from, but I don't believe there's anything else, and our correspondents would have stated otherwise.
Tim, tell everybody who it is in the 500 feet that you send the notices to?
Property owners within 500 feet. So if you're not a property owner, you wouldn't get noticed.
I don't think the 500 feet is adequate, quite frankly, and I think when you put out a notice for whenever city council hears this, it should be a wider area. I'm a neighbor. There is a wall between me. I probably live 250 yards away, and I know it because I went to the Planning and Zoning, but I don't think 500 feet's enough.
Well, we've been debating that before, the 500 feet, but we also post the property. It's pretty obvious on that property. It's posted on all, all the right-of-way that, about that. So, I mean, there's only so far you can do that. You increase the cost for the applicants immensely in some of these areas where you have a lot of property owners. I mean, we've debated that back and forth, how far, but it isn't the code that way, so for you to change, we'd have to change the code.
And we do do a public, a newspaper.
Yes, we do that for the Planning and Zoning Board, but you'll have a full plate, you'll have a big ad when we run this for the...
For the public hearing.
For your hearing.
But there's no sign in front of the property at this point?
There will be a sign in front of the property, because we had, until we know the date of the hearing, we don't put a sign. We take it down mainly, we lose signs. Those signs are not cheap, and we have people that take them.
You know, I'm going to live with what it is, but my own opinion is unless I was on, unless I had gone to the Planning and Zoning, I never would have known what was going on. So I have sympathy for what the gentleman said.
Well, Mayor, I don't want to argue with you, but I mean, there's only so far we can get people to, you know, we try our best, you know, looking at the resources that we have in the city finances. So, I mean, you know, I feel that we do that, but if you feel that we need to change it, certainly, you know, the staff will do whatever you want us to do.
No, I'll let it rest there. Now, I have a question for the city attorney. We're not, the city council's not, not allowed to talk to anybody about this before it's heard for the first time on the 16th. Is that correct?
Right. If you did happen to have any contact or conversations, you would have to report that at the, at the public hearing, and then the applicant and anybody else interested could ask you questions about that contact.
You're able to speak to staff, though?
Yes, you can speak with staff.
Well, I had, I had two people call me and complain that they were informed by somebody in the city that they couldn't talk to me, and they just told me that. That was all they told me, and I thought that was the same report that we got. I thought that was kind of unusual. But anyway, if that's what it is, that's what it is.
Right, the communication is supposed to be at the public hearing.
And so to answer the man's question, what, how is he going to put input, give input?
When you schedule the public hearing at your next meeting, which I assume you will go ahead and do, he has full, has full opportunity to make a testimony before you on that.
When will the sign be posted on the property, Tim?
Soon as, today, we will probably post the sign today, once you get the go-ahead, or tomorrow morning, whatever.
The day.
If for some reason there were no public hearing, then it couldn't move forward. Is that correct or incorrect?
That's correct. You can't, yeah, you have to make the, take action on it. So if we don't have a public hearing, we're not moving forward on it.
All right, thank you. Further public comment? That was interesting. Mr. Degg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, City Council. Ken Degg, 1846 21st Avenue. I'd like to just follow up on Mayor Winger's comment about extending the notice for property owners when there's rezoning. I think it would be helpful as we move forward. Now, we are under the gun again for a lot of development, redevelopment, that's going to be taking place here within our city, and I think it would bring more people to the table. The signs that are posted, they're okay signs, but they're kind of low to the ground, and sometimes they fall over and people don't see them. And on rezonings issues, a lot of things are, like they should be, worked out with the planning staff beforehand, before it comes to the P&amp;Z hearing. And I think what people are looking for is a little bit more notification. It allows them, you know, if you enlarge the area, to see what's going on. And I think it would save you going forward, a lot of headache and really a lot of residents that, you know, development, redevelopment, in our case, it's POI, a lot of commercial encroachment, that they at least know it's coming. Sometimes the neighborhood would have to hire an attorney, and that costs a lot of money. Sometimes, in some cases, people can't afford attorneys, and they have to figure out another way to approach you all. So it actually would be helpful to your residents throughout the city that they would have a little bit more notification. I'm not expecting you to take action today, but this has been conversation as far as extending the 500-foot. It wasn't necessary a few years ago. We just didn't have that much redevelopment. There wasn't that much going on. There was budget cutbacks. People complained that did the applications. They don't want to pay the money, et cetera, et cetera. When you come into an area like now, and I'm in the construction business, so I can talk about it a little bit, when you come into an area like this, it's called, it's ripe for development, and these folks that come in, their pockets are fairly deep. They have the money to do what they're doing. They have the attorneys. They have the engineers. A lot of your little neighborhoods, they don't have those type of resources. They'd have to figure something else out. So again, you're going to get complaints, and remember, our residents, you know, I know they're important to you guys, so I'm just kind of giving you a little bit of a background of, hey, this is the reality of what's happening out in the field. So going forward, I'll talk to you guys later on down the road about extending, you know, where you can reach people, you know? Even if it's a few more hundred feet, it would be helpful. You know, if you look back in our history, we had this conversation a number of years ago where people felt the notification area wasn't large enough. We did enlarge it, then we shrunk it back down. Anyway, that's a little bit of the history, and I would appreciate your consideration going forward. Not expecting the guys to take action today, but thank you.
Well, you know, this comment about it, we have a vision plan, which I think is beautifully crafted, 2006, I think, and, you know, it envisions there is going to be development and redevelopment, and the city's going to change. My family's been here since 1971, and it has changed a lot in my lifetime, and it's changed for the better, I think, by and large. A good friend of mine said if there weren't developers, we'd all live in tents, and we'd still have mosquitoes here. I remember when Riverside Park was a swamp. So there's good and bad development, and I think the widest conversation in any redevelopment so that we get the, the best final product is a good thing. So I, my emotionally, I concur. I think it's our town, all of our town, not city councils, not the Planning and Zonings, no particular group. So I think dialogue is a good one, to have the best redevelopment we can, so that we're happy with what develops. So I concur with the opinion, but be that as it may, we'll talk about it later. Further public comment? I don't see any, so that would move us onto the consent agenda. Go ahead, Mrs.
Mr., I just have a question. I want to pull the item, but on the Veterans Memorial Island, do we know how much is in that account?
No, I don't. I think it's somewhere around $30,000, as I recall from the conversation that we had, but it was more than enough to cover...
That's fine. I was just trying to get a ballpark and to see how much this would be. That said, if there's no public comment, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Any public comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes four, nothing. That brings us to public hearing for A1. This is a final hearing, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to read it by title, and we'll go from there. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida amending Section 6-4 of the Code of the City of Vero Beach related to prohibited hours of sale, service, and consumption of alcoholic beverages, providing for conflict and severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date requested by City Council. Staff comment, please.
As you know, that you passed this ordinance about a year ago, we put a provision in there for a sunset after a year. It was reviewed by the Police Department and the Planning, and our recommendation is, is that we extend it, and if we have an issue or a problem, we obviously would bring it back to City Council for your reconsider, reconsideration.
All right, any public comment? Seeing none, no close public comment. Council comment?
Just a question. Tammy, you said that this was the final reading?
Yes, sir.
Because I thought the last time, we just instructed the staff to bring this back to us.
That was the meeting before. Last meeting, we did have our first reading.
Okay, so the, the effective date is today, and then this will go into the books after this meeting.
Right, because the current extension of the time expires June 15. That's why we wanted to make sure we got it back to you today.
Move for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, it requires a vote. Okay, Mrs. Vock.
Mr. Roll?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. Okay, resolutions. So we're on B1. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida banning all City of Vero Beach interest in the southerly three feet of Lot 17 and the northerly three feet of Lot 18, Block 6, McCamish Park subdivision number one, being a portion of the utility and energy easement dedicated to the public on the plat of McCamish Park subdivision number one, recorded in plat book number one at page 28 of the public records of Indian River County, Florida, providing for an effective date requested by the Public Works Department. Staff comment?
Yes, this is an easement that we no longer use. We have no utilities in it. We sent notices out to the various public utilities and received responses of no objection to abandoning this easement, so that is our recommendation that we close and abandon the easement.
All right, public comment? Seeing none, no close public comment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, this is voice for it. All in favor?
No, sir.
Aye.
It's roll call.
Oh, it's roll call?
Resolution.
It's a resolution. Okay.
Mr. Roll?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. Okay, B2. A resolution of the City Council of Vero Beach amending Section 8, annual leave, vacation Section 9, medical leave, and Section 11, leave of absence of the City of Vero Beach personnel rules, providing for an effective date requested by the Human Resource Director. Staff comment, please.
This is in conformance with the policy of the City Council to freeze the sick leave from the exposure to the city and at the same time cap what may carry it over in vacation time and to the oncoming year. This puts everybody under the same net, with the exception of the Police Department. We obviously will be negotiating with the Police Department, but we're streamlining the organization to meet, I think, what the policy was of the City Council in order to cap our exposures of these accrued vacation and sick leave times.
All right, open it for public comment. Seeing none, will close public comment. Council discussion.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Vock.
Mr. Roll?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. That moves us to B3. A resolution authorized in the City of Vero Beach, Florida enter into a supplemental joint participation agreement with the State of Florida Department of Transportation to develop an airport master plan, FDOT 423952-1-94-01, requested by the airport director.
What this is doing is actually allowing us to accept a grant from the Department of Transportation. It will cost the city or the airport approximately $22,000. We do have the funding for that, but it's extending our master plan and which, looking at other elements, for example, an economic impact study, and you will see it further on in my comments from the City Manager to adopt the, the expansion of that contract, amendment to the contract with Ricardo.
All the funds are within, stay within the airport, right? Nothing comes?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right, open the public comment. Seeing none, close public comment. Further discussion or a resolution, as you see fit.
Move for approval?
Second.
Mrs. Vock?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. All right, that moves us to ordinances and resolutions for first reading by title. Future hearings required. Now, this first one, 5A, requires a second hearing on the 16th, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it is quasi judicial?
It is quasi judicial, yes.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I will read it by title, then. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, requested by National Oil and Gas Distribution, Orange State Retail Properties Incorporated, and 1660 U.S. Highway One LLC, to annex properties located at 1660 and 1690 U.S. Highway One, and Dr. Richard E. Bollock subdivision, containing 1.32 acres, more or less, pursuant to the voluntary annexation provision of section 171 dot point zero four four Florida statutes, providing for an effective date requested by the planning and development director. Do we have swear-ins required for this, or?
No, Mr. McGarry was-
This is the first reading, and this is, it'll be a quasi judicial hearing. The thing I want to ask, Ms. Vock, we're supposed to advertise for two consecutive weeks in a paper. Can we still meet that?
We will have to have this at our July meeting.
Yeah, I just want to be sure. So it'll be the July meeting to meet the Florida statutes.
July what?
Public comment on this one? Seeing no public comment, or close public comment? If there's no council discussion, I'll make a motion to do it-
I'd like-
Go ahead.
Question, public questions. I think, delighted to see redevelopment and increasing our tax base. Having read through everything from the P&amp;Z review of this, I'm still curious as to their request to be annexed. I'm hoping that we'll come up with some great reasons so that we can look at other areas that want to be annexed into the city.
Well, without getting, it's going to be quasi judicial. I can answer that in a general thing. Mainly, our regulations for certain setbacks and other requirements are more liberal on U.S. One than the counties.
Than the counties, okay.
And that's one reason to meet their site requirements that came into city. That's my understanding.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gary. With that, I'd move for a second, a public hearing in July-
July 21st.
Twenty-first.
Second. No further discussion, Mrs. Vock?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Wait a minute, July 21st?
Yeah, we canceled our first meeting in July.
You're making the applicants very unhappy. I know. You can only do what you do. Okay.
Unless you want to do a special call, just to come in and-
Can we do it during the budget meetings?
No, that doesn't give us enough time to advertise.
Could we have a special call?
Yeah, we need two weeks.
The day of the-
Yeah, of a budget hearing.
Of the budget hearing. And the special call would be restricted to this one item, if that were so.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant the June 17th meeting that we had scheduled.
No, no.
And the budget hearings. Yeah, I will work with the calendar, and I'll let the applicant know what date we have set up.
They're happy.
That's a little earlier. Yeah, we'll try to work with them.
Do we need to amend the motion, then?
We need to amend the motion, then, to-
We have to have a date certain for the public hearing.
Yeah.
The third, July 13th is the beginning of the budget hearings.
Could we just move our council meeting to that?
Yes, we can do it on July 13th. That'd give us enough time to advertise.
I amend the motion for July 13th, then.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Vock?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Tim, you might want to let them know that we have another annexation that may be coming forward as well. We're having another application being submitted on 43rd Avenue. Has to do with municipal sewer, that they would like connection. So they're, part of the requirement would be come into the city. So that's at Cumberland Farms on 43rd Avenue.
All right, pass it four, nothing. I don't know whether they said that or not. It brings us to 5B. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, requested by Benjamin D. Emerson of Vero Beach, Florida Incorporated, to amend the comprehensive plan future land use map by changing the future land use designation from residential low six per acre to residential high fifteen to eighteen units per acre for property located in 1610 Highway 81A, including all of Lot 1 and 18, Block 2 of the Ocean Corporation subdivision, totaling 0.74 acres, more or less, providing for effective date required, requested by planning and development director. And what we're doing here is, we're establishing the quasi judicial hearing on the 16th. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. It still has to be open to public comment. No public comment, we'll close that.
Big question on the resolution attachment C is missing. At least in the copy I have, I don't have anything in attachment C. If there's meant to be one, it doesn't show up.
I have attachment C, and it should be the-
Well, you have A. Okay, we have attachment A is the land use map. Then I was going to say, then there's nothing for B, then it's C.
There's attachment B.
There's nothing there.
Oh, you're missing those? It should be-
Yeah, I don't have any of that in my-
Okay, we need-
But I want to make sure-
I've got them in my file, so.
I want to make sure they exist and what they are, because I don't want to be, yeah, moving forward an incomplete ordinance here.
We'll follow up on that, make sure everybody has a complete package.
Thank you.
All right, and this one, the only possible motion is to bring it forward, I believe. Is that not correct?
Move it for a June the 16th hearing.
Is there a second?
Yes.
You second?
Yes.
Okay. Any further council comment?
So really, the motion is just to bring it to the June 16th meeting. Is that the time we're with? We have comment from the public to-
Correct. That's when you'll hear the quasi judicial hearing on there.
So really, we can't debate this too much?
No, no, no. And actually, the code is written that way, too, to make sure that applicants that come forward get a due process at a hearing.
All right.
Just for a comment, attachment C is on the web, well, it's not on the website. It just has the attachment C, so it's not-
I was not provided with that information, but I will get with Tim to get it.
And there's no B. Like I said, it goes from A, then I have a flight that says attachment A of a blank piece of paper and-
I have a complete package. Okay, something happened. I have a complete package, too, but I-
So when, can I get something clear? When it comes to us, does this mean that the planning and zoning has recommended it, and your office has recommended it?
Yes, they've taken action on it. They may recommend denial or change, but yes, they've taken action on it. And we've, and the staff has made a recommendation.
And do we know that recommendation?
Yes, it's in the report. Both the staff and the planning and zoning board have recommended approval of both items.
That's what I thought.
And you'll see it in the P&amp;Z meeting notes that we get.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll call a motion. Mrs. Vock?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
No.
Pass this three to one.
All right, C. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, requested by Dr. Benjamin D. Emerson, amending the official zoning map by changing the zoning district designation of R1A, single-family residential district, to RM13, multi-family residential district, for property located in 1610 Highway 81A, lots 1 and 18, Block 2, the Ocean Corporation subdivision, containing 0.74 of an acre, more or less, providing for an effective date requested by the planning and development director. And this one is like onto it. In other words, the only possible action is to move it for further hearing. Staff comment, please?
Yes, as you point out, the staff's request is to be scheduled for hearing.
Public comment? Council comment or motion?
Once again, the attachments, resolution attachment D. Can we just make sure when this comes for a public hearing that the ordinance is complete and that we have all the attachments? Thank you. With that said, I move for a public hearing on June the 16th.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, it fails.
Paul, I believe the code requires you to move it forward, rather than let it-
And why are we voting? I just-
Well, you take official action on the date.
Well, it has to be a first reading.
Yeah.
Is why we're here today.
You have to have a first reading.
It's just a first reading.
But normally, on an application which is going to require a quasi judicial, an applicant that submitted, they get their due process by being able to-
Then why did you bother us with it now?
Because it requires that we-
It's required by statute.
Required by statute to go through a first reading in our code.
And this is a companion to the one that was just-
Yes, I mean, they're tied together.
Okay, I think the parliamentary ruling is that we will have a hearing on the 16th will show that there was a motion made and not seconded. Okay, city clerk matters.
We have a reduction of lien request, and I think the police chief will be handling this.
I'm here for my first lien reduction request.
Don't make a habit of it.
Good morning.
I'm just teasing you.
We had a request from a attorney, Mr. Gary Freeze, out of the Brevard County area, I believe Melbourne, on behalf of Mr. Theratatt Tolasek, or Tolasek. I hope I'm pronouncing his name right. He has a home, I believe it may be for sale, but he has a home there, 1925 Fifth Avenue. And the issue there over a period of time was not cutting his grass. The growth was too much, and Code cited him for that. And there was an order to pay in August of 2013, and it was about a $3,000, $3,100 fine at that time. And then there was an additional one down the road there, as you have, I believe, in your paperwork, totaling the 3,000, 13,000 or so. Their request is to reduce that lien to, from that number to $500. In speaking with Code and Tom Ramsey, who was out at that location, we've got a chronological event listed here on our paperwork as well, and we're recommending to assess the $3,178.65, which is about the fine as of the August 2013 order to pay. I guess Mr. Tolasek is from Thailand and was going through a divorce, and the only address that the property appraiser had, that we had, was in Cape Canaveral, and that's where we sent the notices. And I guess he had vacated that residence. And the ex-wife was incarcerated in Brevard County, so forth and so on. He's since married, what have you. It's a bit of a story there. Evidently not employed, what have you. But the recommendation from staff is to assess the $3,178, again, in 65 cents, which is, I believe, the total from the first order to pay from a Code enforcement hearing.
All right, questions of the chief from council?
Is the property currently up for sale?
I believe it is. The key there, of course, is to have the grass cut, and he has been in compliance since last February, by the way. So it's been over a year of compliance. I think that was their intention. I think it is either for sale or being sold at this time. And that's our key, that's our, basically, the outcome we want to see is, of course, the property kept well, and someone being there and not having the home vacant as best we can for the community itself.
And I'm seeing under your recommendation that really, the only city cost that we have is, what, $50, $32.50 and a $96.15?
Yes.
And the rest of it is just the civil penalties when-
Right. That would be 60 days of civil penalty on that.
I would be okay with a $500. I mean, if we need to get the property moved and down the road, and everything's being taken care of, I don't know why we need to continue to penalize somebody.
Just for informational purposes, we do have embedded costs that are not really realizing this for the enforcement. And if you reduce these liens too much, there's no reason to go out and fine, folks. And if you get it down to 500, you've got to remember, it started at 13. And to me, I think the 3,100 that the chief is recommending is more than reasonable, considering the issues that we've been. But you take this over time, even though the grass was cut, we still had enforcement issues there.
Well, I need to see those costs, you know, in order to-
Again, those are going to be marginal costs, and the fact that Tom, just preparing this report is not included in those costs.
Well, it'd be nicer in the future if we just have an estimation of that, so we know that we're not, that we are inclusive of all the variables that we need to make a decision.
We can do that, but remember, these fines are penalties to encourage people to-
Compliance.
-follow the codes. If it's just to recover our costs, that's a totally different function of what we want to do.
And we're certainly look at each case on its own basis, but I agree with city manager in this regard, where if you set a precedent for this type of, you know, reducing it to 500, the rest will follow.
And you're going to have some fines that are going to be pretty large, because we went to the $500 a day fine, and I realize that, you know, it's going to be a limited area, but those are going to be pretty hefty fines that'll be coming to the city council. And to go through the issues of notification and discussions with the property owners, there's got to be an encouragement that somebody in the future is going to cut the grass without us going out and citing the grass to be cut.
And even though that Cape Canaveral address was the only one, again, that's the only way we can find the addresses, through the property appraiser there, you know, it is your obligation as a homeowner, whether you're, you know, divorced, or your ex-spouse is in jail, or what have you, to update where you can have mail forwarded to you or the appropriate person.
Well, I can't imagine an ex-spouse would be too enthusiastic to stop the fining process.
Well, they were co-owners, so, again, at the time.
Is there a valuation of the house, what it would sell for? I mean, are we talking a-
I think I took a peek at the website there with the county, but I don't recall. It's, and we looked at that as well. Probably under 100, maybe something like that, just under 100.
There's actually, in the code, in this process of lien forgiveness or reduction, there's 13 criteria that the chief would have looked at to come up with his recommendation.
I would make a motion to accept the chief's staff recommendation on this. Under the circumstances, I think it is right to reduce, to offer to reduce. I appreciate that he looked at all extenuating circumstances regarding this case, and I'd boot forward with a lien of $3,178.65 as proposed.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All right. Is there public comment? Yes, Mr. Dig.
Just say, as I were, Ken Dig, 1846 21st Avenue. On these liens, if you go back in our history as a city, we've had a lot of code issues over the years, especially in our neighborhood and other neighborhoods on the mainland, with absentee landlords. And they get notified, they just don't take care of the property. In the past, this is before you all, a lot of the fines were reduced, and people just were not listening. And you did talk about that today. The reason you do have the fines, and you have to stick to this a little bit, is to discourage, I'll just call it for what it is, you know, bad behavior. Because what happens when you have these properties unkept, it downgrades your neighborhoods. And we're trying to pull up neighborhoods. There's a lot of us that have been working on fixing things up, helping other property owners, et cetera, et cetera. So I understand, I heard the circumstances today. It's unfortunate. I think the chief made it very clear. The city, I think, was lenient. It was a pretty hefty fine.
They brought it down to something that's manageable. And I, I appreciate you all sticking with that. But anyway, thanks for your time.
Thanks for your comment. Any further public comment? Any further counsel comment? We do have a motion and a second.
Is this a voice?
It's a voice.
Oh. We finally get a voice. All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? I guess it passes four, nothing. Thank you very much. Good conversation, though, really. When you read this one, it, it was interesting, to say the least. All right, city managers, managers matters. You have a floor, Jim?
The first, well, first of all, let me clarify. On the Memorial Park historical monuments, there is $13,700 in that account. So we'll be taking that 3,000 from that. The second is the work order agreement between the city of Vero Beach and Ricardo and Associates' Airport Master Plan. This is in conformance with the grant that you all have voted to accept from the Department of Transportation. This would be supplemented into the master plan. We are highly recommending that we use Ricardo, since they are heavily involved in the public outreach and the master planning process. So I think I need a vote and, of approval from the council if you choose to do so.
I say move.
Well, we still, yeah, we probably, is there any public comment? Doesn't look like there is, but there is none. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And this is a voice vote also. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes four, nothing. Jim?
The next item is the stormwater utility consultant selection. As you know, that the council instructed the city staff to proceed in looking into a stormwater utility. We did an RFP, as the council is aware. In that process, we have formed a stormwater utility committee that would look at the responses that we received. We did receive responses. We interviewed three different companies as a consultant for this stormwater utility. And we are recommending collective water resources as a consultant for this. They're very highly skilled in that. They also have local ties to the community, which gives a, even additional benefit to this. We did include the calculations and the scores. We utilized a representative from the Utility Commission, also a representative from the Finance Commission, to review these proposals from the consultants. And again, we recommend that we go with collective water resources to help us draw up the plan for a stormwater utility.
All right, any public comment? I don't see any public comment. This is a voice vote. I'll make the motion to accept. Second?
Discussion, please.
Absolutely.
We are undertaking negotiation of a contract of which we have no funds for.
That is correct. The way we look at it is that we would, A, take miscellaneous funds, but between now and the end of the fiscal year, probably would be very little expenditure in this process, because we will have to go into negotiations. We have to go back to the Finance and Utility Commission before it comes back to the city council.
And we can make sure, we can make sure in the contract, there's provision that, obviously, if there's no funding, that the contract will be terminated.
All right, I'll call a motion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
It passes three, one. Further matters for the city manager, please?
Yes, I noticed that as, our city manager is a certified city manager, and as part of that is required to do continuing educations. And I would ask Mr. Conner to tell us about his latest.
Okay. Just for clarification, as you know, when the city of Vero Beach advertised for a city manager to fill the position, credentialed manager was one of the assets that you wanted to bring to the table, which I am a credentialed manager, which means that I have to do 40 hours of continuing education on an annual basis. And part of that is to attend conferences that have professional connotations to it. I do webinars, as an example, and various other ways of, of education to get those hours of requirement. But I just recently, last week, went to the Florida City and County Managers' Annual Conference, in which we talked about several items. But one of the things we were doing is talking about going, getting back to our roots, rebuilding our communities and how we do that. One of the topics that we discussed was the outreach to the community. Mr. Old and I have been in conversations of how do we get the word out of what the community, what we as an organization are doing on behalf of the community? How do we get input from the community back to us to talk about that? And some of the ideas that came out of that were to try to do outreaches that are just not your typical outreach to the community. One of those is to maybe do a Survey Monkey outreach to people. If you look at collectively how many email addresses we have, and you put out a survey and, and schedule that, I've asked the department directors to take this under consideration, and we're going to get back together next week and, and talk about what we can do and how you could, A, put the information out, but at the same time, get responses back from the community. Since we're going into the budget season, it would be obviously a good timing mechanism to do it. But a lot of cities are starting to use electronics to outreach. We have, and again, going back, if you stop and think about it, for example, when we were talking about the parking on Ocean Drive, we have a whole collection of email addresses. They may not be residents, but they have interest in the community by running a business. The police department has the neighborhood watch, which is a variety of people. Parks and Recreation take email addresses when we have activities at the center. So it, it would be a very diverse group. And, and I'm just throwing it out for food of thought. We have not formulated any policy. But again, that was one of the takebacks that I had of the meeting.
Great, great, great to hear.
Another item that we discussed and part of it was a city-county roundtable. And as you know, I guess we could say strained relations between city and county. But believe it or not, that you look over the state, we have it better than some. For example, in Palm Beach County, they're setting up this ethics commission, and Palm Beach County sent bills out to the various cities. One of them got a bill in excess of $100,000 to help fund this ethics. And they're doing it under a home rule designation that the county has. Obviously, to say that that puts a little strained relationship between cities and counties in that particular case. Broward County has special laws that, for example, this rezoning that you would be doing, you'd be going through our planning and zoning through the city council, then you would go through the county commission, and then you would come back to the city council. And it's a real convoluted process in order to make things happen in Broward County. Again, the strained relationship between the city of Fort Lauderdale and Broward County is, obviously puts some into that. And one of the things that we talked about is the constitution of the state of Florida sets us up for competition and potential conflict. And so these are things that we're trying to talk to, through as an organization, and trying to encourage more county administrators to participate in that conversation, because it's something that effectively is impeding local government across the state of Florida, where we, I think we could be much more effective in what we're doing. But at least it's up on the table now, and we're discussing it as an organization and trying to, to do some of those processes and to do the outreach. The other thing that the annual conference does do is it puts me in communication with some old friends that I've had, as well as the, just the communication across the state and getting ideas of what cities are doing. And the same issues that we encounter, believe it or not, are also encountered by many of the cities throughout the state. And how do we adapt to this new world that we're in, where the needs, wants, and desires of our community are ever-changing? And we've gone out of the doldrums of the economic downturn, and now we're going up. And as the economy improves, the, the situation and expectations of your residents change dramatically. And, and I think we're going to, as a community, encompass that. And hopefully, I'll be able to use the FCCMA as part of our resources in the process. But thank you for the opportunity to, to talk about what we did last week.
Thank you very much, Mr. Conner. I guess my only comment was just on emails, that I think we need to be very, very cautious. And although we may have this data, I mean, if I've given it to the police for a neighborhood watch, I don't necessarily want, want to be receiving a city survey. So I think, you know, people have given things for specific, you know, I don't want them to be afraid to give their email for a specific purpose, thinking, oh, no, the city's going to start flooding me with, you know, survey data, so.
And, and I agree, and the city attorney did bring that up at our discussion this morning and warning us. And, and we're looking at ways to get around. For example, sending out a notice, say, are you interested in participating? But I, I think somehow we've got to be able to reach, you can mail a survey out and get your 10 to 15 percent response and say, this reflects the community, when in fact, we know it really doesn't. You can wait around for the elections and get the 25 percent people who vote and say, is that the response that you want? And obviously, but the communities that are seeing it, and for example, we did a survey for the airport master plan, and it was by email, it was electronically done. And Eric tells me, we got over 200 responses back. So of all the things that we've done, it appears to me that the electronic connection with people seems to be the, the thing of the future. And one of the problems that we have also, and cities across the state are facing this, for example, the Facebook, the interaction on Facebook, and in some cases, fortunately, I don't have this issue, but some elected officials like to get into a dialogue with constituents over the Facebook, and sometimes it gets a little rough around the edges. Those become public records, and is an embarrassment to both parties when it's all said and done. And so that, again, is not really a, it, it's not a structured way to get responses from the community, even though we do have a Facebook and the police department uses it pretty regular. You've got to have the instrument that hopefully gets the intended results that you're looking for.
I definitely think it's worth, yeah, some research. Thank you.
How, how many cities went? Sort of?
There, there probably were 150 to 200 cities and counties that were represented.
Great. That's sort of half, huh?
Just about half, yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
You had smaller communities that did not participate, but you had larger cities, Fort Lauderdale, for example, was there.
Good.
Any further points for the city manager? Okay, seeing now, I guess that moves us on to city council matters, or individual council matters. Only one business thing to report. Tomorrow afternoon, I'll be meeting with Mayor Susan Adams and Mayor Richard Gilmore. We're the small ad hoc committee to set up how we bring the information back to our respective city councils if the three cities are accepted in the Lagoon Coalition. And nothing much more to say other than that. I would assume that we would vote for Mayor Gilmore to be the laus, and he's certainly the one that's done the most amount of work. And I'll report on whatever's decided at the next city council meeting. The only thing I had to report is that, was at the Memorial Day, as many of us were. And it was, it was a very, very good ceremony, and a very good speaker, and it was, it was really quite impressive. With that, I pass it to you, Mr. Kramer.
Well, unfortunately, I was out of town and missed that. I was able to come back for Downtown Friday. I'm always amazed at the quality job that Main Street Vero Beach does, this particular being in the middle of summer. We still had a packed event, and greatly appreciate them.
Say that. All Aboard Florida bond hearing, the Florida Development Finance Corporation is going to hear that now. It's scheduled for June 10th in Orlando, 3:00 to 6:00 at Doubletree. Once again, if you are aware, the private financing for All Aboard Florida, that we're supposed to be required to have sell all their bonds by July, as this keeps encroaching into July 1st, I'm sure they'll be looking for an extension should that be approved. But anyway, we're continuing to make some headway in delaying All Aboard. Memorial Day, Lieutenant General McErney was our, was the guest speaker at Memorial Day Celebration. I will say, he's from Washington. He came to Vero Beach at his own expense to be our keynote speaker. The pleasure of talking with him after the ceremony, and he and his wife are even considering possibly retiring to Vero Beach. They could be a great addition here. Also, Ms. Vero Beach, Gabrielle Martinez, was at the Memorial Day event. I gave some information to Ms. Vock, that she would, just wanted to let everyone know she was available to attend events and to help represent the city. And Ms. Vock has her contact information. Wanted to thank all our local doctors and lawyers that played softball for United Way on Saturday. It was great to have the turnout, even with a little bit of drizzle, it didn't dampen the enthusiasm for the game. And remind everybody, gallery stroll on, this Friday on 14th Avenue. And then just wanted to ask Mr. Old, I guess, about the FMPA meeting, that I, I did listen into it, and was concerned about the St. Lucie Bonds being downgraded. This is the preponderance of school board bonds that FMPA purchased.
I, I, I don't know about that. I was there at the meeting, and I don't remember that at all.
But FMPA has invested heavily in Chicago's school board bonds, as they're all downgraded to a B, B level. And at that meeting, you also made the comment that you're friends with FMPA. After the voters have voted to sell the electric, we all agree that the only obstacle to that was FMPA. I certainly didn't understand your comment. Could you?
I don't, I don't, I don't think I said we were friends with FMPA. I think we're on the board of FMPA. We're, we're cooperating with them, we're dealing with them. We're trying to work with them. We're trying to improve the management there.
Your quote was that they have friends. They are friends of FMPA in Vero Beach.
Maybe so, I don't remember.
And I don't understand why even that comment was necessary or what was behind it.
Mr. Old?
I, again, I attended the memorial service. I thought it was very well done. I think there are also some other things going on with the All Aboard Florida, that, that Ruth Standbridge and a number of people in the preservation area are working with that are making some real progress. And I look forward to working on this long-range planning sort of thing coming up in, in June.
Yeah, it's a, it's a hurtling task, I can tell you. Anyway, do you have a motion to adjourn then?
So moved.
Okay, we are adjourned.